Good afternoon, welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, December 2nd, 2019. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing, "Oh, Canada."
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to an alumni, our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt that set of minutes from November 18th? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, November 18th as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt them? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And a motion for the adoption of the agenda. We have one additional agenda item. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd move that council adopt the agenda with the addition of item 7.2, the redevelopment of the Park Hotel sites.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the agenda with that amendment? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. Since we moved to a two-section council meeting, we have two delegation opportunities. The first is open delegation opportunity where anybody can come and address council on any community-related matter. And our second delegation opportunity is in the evening, and that's for scheduled delegation. I believe we do have some scheduled delegations this evening from the Grand Prairie Catholic School Board, and we also have a public hearing. But this afternoon, we do have some friends from the county of Grand Prairie here to make a presentation and delegation. And so I would invite up from the county of Grand Prairie, I think Reeve Boprey. He's the fastest-acting out of the gallery. Reeve Boprey, welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Given. With me today is my colleagues from County Council. I believe everyone is here with the exception of Counselor Bullford, he was unable to attend. But we're here today actually to make a presentation to the city of Grand Prairie with regards of our revenue-sharing agreement that we've had since 2004. And so today, we did bring the big check, but we'll also make sure that we have the real money deposited into the city account by, before the end of the year. Most likely by the end of this month, or I guess it would be the end of the year now, it's December. But we've been working towards trying to find a date that has worked well for both the city and the county for us to make the presentation today. So we'd really like it if we had an opportunity with our friends to take a picture with you and I receiving and giving the check and council members supporting it.
Well, thanks for being here today for the delegation portion of our agenda. The way our council meetings typically work is when we have delegations, we have an opportunity for questions for the delegations or any questions that might arise for administration. And any questions for Reeve Boprey? Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. Thank you for, and welcome to our chambers. I was just wondering, the contract, I think, was signed in 2003, effective January. And I don't think you've ever appeared before, and I was just wondering why you choose this year or today to make that happen?
Good question, Counselor O'Toole. Thank you very much. You know, I think it was one of the things the council has had it on our to-do list for several years because there's a timestamp attached to it and date. By the time council has made that, given direction to administration, the check had already left. So we've been working over the last few months trying to find a time that would be appropriate for both councils to meet, to be able to have that recognition that we do have the revenue-sharing agreement, and we've had it, like you say, since it came into effect in 2003. The first amount of money flowed basically in 2004.
Okay, thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any other questions for Reeve Boprey? Or arising? I don't see anybody else in the queue. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. I've just got a question for our administration, actually. And just for our administration, could you give me a little bit of a background on just what this revenue-sharing agreement is exactly and what the intention of it is?
I guess I'd direct that to Mr. Bork?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The, I understand the genesis of the agreement was when the city looked to support regional development and partnered or created Aqua Terra, which allowed city water to, to different other communities, including the county and Sexsmith. The, the revenue generated from it was a recognition of the, of the city moving forward with, with a new water utility that would, would spur development in the county and Sexsmith at the time.
Counselor Bressi?
Can I speak to that a little bit?
Well, I'll go back to Counselor Bressi first. Did you have any other questions, Counselor Bressi?
Just curious, another question to administration. So this is based on revenue generated by the county. How much was, how much was generated this year? And do we know how much about has been generated since it was formed by the county?
Mr. Bork?
We have looked into that, and our calculations are that the, the county has been a net benefit of about $82 million in dividends and tax revenue from, from this agreement. In this year, it's approximately $11 million. They benefited from the agreement of creation of Aqua Terra.
Counselor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Also for Mr. Bork. So this, has, has any of the terms changed in this agreement since 2003, since it was signed?
Mr. Bork?
No, I believe this is still the, or this is the agreement we're still operating under. I believe there was an agreement that predated it that I'm not familiar with, but we have this agreement. We have other agreements with Wembley and Sexsmith at this time.
Okay, and if I may- Thank you. So it was, it was regarding kind of what the, what the city had in 2003, and we've changed considerably since then. Would this reflect any of those development changes either in the county or in the city? Or would it be time to consider a revisit of this to reflect the updates and the infrastructure that has changed in the respective municipalities since?
Mr. Bork?
I can't speak to whether it would be time to revisit. That would be up to the separate municipalities to have that discussion. I can say at the time, facilities like Eastlink, our new outdoor pool, were not, not in, not contemplated at that time. Also, the agreement reflects non-residential development in the county. It didn't reflect residential developments that have, that have come online since then, including with Spring Ridge or Carriage Lane.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Friesen. Any other questions for the delegation or for administration at this stage? I don't have anybody else in the queue. Reeve Boprey, did you want to make any closing comments before we move on?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just making sure that there is understanding around separation between the Aqua Terra agreement and the county and city of Grand Prairie's revenue-sharing agreement. We are shareholders, equal shareholders in Aqua Terra, which means that the city of Grand Prairie also has net benefit from any of the shares that are attributed to Aqua Terra. The revenue-sharing agreement that I speak of is, the essence of the agreement was really to recognize development or pay for the share of the facilities or for services that the county residents use. And that was negotiated at the time by the councils of the day and basically, and on industrial development. And administration is correct, it doesn't include residential, but it does conclude 10% of all assessment that hooks up to commercial industrial development in the county of Grand Prairie. And it is an ongoing accumulative type of agreement. And in the 10 years of its inception, or pardon me, since its inception, it is just under $10 million of revenue share that the county of Grand Prairie has given to the city of Grand Prairie under a revenue-sharing agreement, not the Aqua Terra agreement. The Aqua Terra agreement is total, is different in the fact that we are all, are shareholders based on the amount of, of assets that we contributed or sent into the actual company. And that's how our dividends are dispersed to us based on, on the amount of shares that we have. But to be able to change those agreements, it's got to be unanimous shareholder, because it's unanimous shareholders agreement.
Sure. I would observe that the revenue-sharing agreement is, actually has no part with the other shareholders and has nothing to do with the unanimous shareholders agreement, because it's an agreement between the city and the county. Other than that distinction?
Sorry, distinction that anything that was changed as far as the dividends that came, that are realized from the Aqua Terra are, are based on a, on a unanimous shareholders agreement.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah.
The revenue-sharing agreement between the two municipalities is strictly between the two municipalities.
Exactly, and is a portion of the growth in property tax revenue in commercial industrial in the county.
Yes, 10%.
Absolutely. And the 10% this year equates to this 1.2.
1.2, yes.
So roughly, the county got $12 million in property tax revenue from those connected properties.
Approximately, yeah.
So, yeah.
We also contribute over and above that, right? There's an additional $400,000 that was contributed into the city as well through our agreement with the library, as well as the art gallery. And I believe there might be one other, but it escapes me at the moment. So it's closer to 1.6.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, Reeve Boprey. We appreciate you being here this afternoon, and I don't see anybody else with any questions. So we're going to move on in our agenda. We have item 7.1, the fire automatic aid agreement. And we're, I don't believe we had any other scheduled delegations, Reeve Boprey?
I did ask for-
Oh, sorry. Excuse me. I'm being informed, we do have the Grand Prairie District Pipes and Drums who'd let us know that they wish to be here as well. So we have another delegation that's following you. I want to make sure the delegation gets an opportunity to come forward, and then we're going to move on with our agenda.
So you won't be doing the photo opportunity with us?
We're in the middle of our business meeting, Reeve Boprey. That's not our normal practice for us to accept contractual payments in a photo op manner during our council meeting. And so we're going to continue on with our agenda.
Sorry, I was under the understanding that today that we would be receiving, as, as most good neighbors do, an opportunity to show the benefit to all of our region, how we could collectively get along. My apologies.
Thanks, Reeve Boprey. So next was our delegation from Grand Prairie Pipe and Drum. Sir, if you can come down and introduce yourself for council, certainly would appreciate that.
Shirley, it's Cordell Nelson, and I'm this year's president of the Grand Prairie and District Pipes and Drums. I'm not sure if all council are aware, but last year, we were successful in receiving an arts grant for a major project. The Grand Prairie Pipes and Drums has been around in Grand Prairie since the early 1980s, but it's only been in the last three years that we started competing, both locally and in other provinces. And with that, we put our eye towards competing at the World Pipe Band Championships in Glasgow this year, which we went to in August. We weren't successful in making it into the finals, but we did place ninth in our, our heat of 24, so we felt pretty good about that, competing with a lot of bands from around the world, as far away as the, the Middle East, Australia, New Zealand. So we were successful in receiving a grant from you last year, and the money was $1,000 was really important for us in getting our initial deposits on accommodation and travel, as well as our registration fees. So on behalf of the Grand Prairie District Pipes and Drums, I'm not sure who I'll give this to here, because it isn't a photo op, but we did get a picture of the band. And a thank you to the city of Grand Prairie. This was taken on the Glasgow Concert Hall steps because we did concerts throughout downtown Glasgow. So again, thank you from the band.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody. Oh, Counselor O'Toole?
Well, I'm glad you had a good time, and I'm glad you're here to, I'm on that granting board and committee, and it's good to see that people are, I'm going to say you were successful. And I'm glad you had a good time, and it's nice to hear a thank you from the folks that we do get applications from. And I'm glad that you're here to share your story. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. I'll just add my congratulations and thanks for representing Grand Prairie and the Grand Prairie region. Out on the world stage, it is a brave group of Canucks who will strap on a kilt and head to Scotland and, and demonstrate their skill with pipe and drum. And we really appreciate the fact that you're doing that on behalf of all of us in this area. Thank you so much. You could leave your presentation with Mr. Bork over there on the, on my left, your right. Thank you very much. Did we have any other delegations that wish to present to council this afternoon? I don't see anybody else coming forward, so we'll move on into our report section, starting with fire automatic aid agreement. I'll look to administration for an introduction of this item. Ah, I see Chief Previn. Chief Bossen, if you'd like to come forward?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll speak to the agreement very briefly and certainly answer any questions that might be following that. So there's sort of two aspects of this agreement. One is a mutual aid agreement, which simply means that one fire department can call on a neighboring fire department for help and vice versa. There'll be no billing associated with these requests, and both parties can request assistance. There are no obligations to send resources if none are available. This is a very common practice in the fire service, and it is considered a best practice. The second aspect of this agreement is the automatic aid component, which means that a fire department will automatically be dispatched on identified calls outside their normal response area. As an example, the county can get to some of our areas quicker than we can get to those areas, and as well can the, can we get to some of the areas quicker than the county. So we're kind of looking at setting up our dispatch protocol that would basically provide the nearest engine in surrounding areas within a short distance of Grand Prairie for the city. This will provide a better service to customers both within the city and within the county. It is therefore my recommendation that this proposal be approved as submitted. Of course, with a full understanding, this is part of the ICF negotiations. Certainly open to any questions at this point. I know this was very brief, but I believe you have a copy of the report, so.
Thanks very much, Chief. Any questions for Chief Bossen? Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I've got a, I've got a couple for the chief and then a couple that are just about ICF in general that might be for somebody else, but maybe I'll ask the chief first and then see if somebody else wants to get in. I'm just curious, you mentioned that these are, first of all, I'm really glad that we're talking about this. I was really shocked when I got on the city council and we didn't have this, so I'm glad that we are talking about it now. I'm just curious, in terms of, you talked about how there's similar agreements and they are quite common. Is it also common for them, like this agreement, not to have any provision in them for billing for costs and billing for the services provided?
Mayor Given, I, I believe that the most normal type of mutual aid is strictly we help you, you help us type thing. There are more specific or specialized agreements probably where, where there is a fee for service. I know some, some departments have agreements to provide maybe hazmat service where there'll be a fee for that. Typically, the, the mutual aid agreements do not have a fee associated with the agreement itself higher than recovering costs. So if we respond to a call within the county and we use X number of liters of, of firefighting foam, then typically it would be a means to recover that cost.
Okay, great. And then if I may, if you may. And then I'm also just curious, in terms of just talking about fees for costs, my understanding is this would be different than the GPREP agreement in terms of if we entered into this and there was a large-scale disaster, GPREP would enter in and there are provisions in that for us often to recover costs from the province. Is that correct?
So typically, what you have is sort of your everyday incidents, our department would handle that. And sort of the extreme, we would activate the, the GPREP, and in some cases, the province would step in and provide resources as well. So that is correct. So really, this mutual aid agreement is sort of bridging the gap between our everyday occurrences and then kind of till when GPREP would kick in, sort of more extreme type scenarios.
And then one other question is, I'm just trying to get a scope of, I've got, I know where stations are, but I don't really know what travel times are. So I'm trying to get an idea of what areas of the city would be, actually be closest to a county station and which areas of the county would actually be closest to a city station. Are you able to give me an idea of that?
I, I can give you a pretty good rough idea. So when we're looking at the newly annexed area, the northwest corner basically of the city is where the county would be able to get to quicker than we can. Also, when you look at the south end where we have Aqua Terra facilities off the correction line, the county could get to those areas as well quicker than us. Where we typically would be able to arrive sooner is kind of east and west of the city. So Silver Point would be one, one point where we could get quicker than, than the county could, as an example. There's subdivisions east of town as well where we probably could get there a little bit quicker.
Thank you. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, and thank you very much, Fire Chief Bossen, for putting together this deal and finally ratifying it. As Counselor Bressi, back when I first got elected, I was like, well, we don't have this. I can't believe we didn't get there. Just a question in regards to the terms. One, one sort of made me raise my eyebrow a bit, and I guess I'm just looking for your expertise, but it's under section three. It says assistance may be refused when the responding party or its designate or chief deems it imprudent or unsafe to provide such assistance. So as extenuating circumstances, is there anything outside of GPREP where we might deem a fire unsafe for our crews to, to respond to?
Good question. Off the top of my head, I really sort of can't think of, of any. But if you were to look maybe not at a fire, but a water rescue situation, we used to provide that service when we did have the contract with the county, and we would provide water rescue on the Wapiti River. Since that time, we have disposed of our boat that we did have at the time. So that'll probably be one scenario where we would not be able to provide the assistance, because we simply don't have the, the resources or the equipment. I don't know if that answered your question?
No, it does. Yeah, no, I was just wondering, like, well, these guys are trained for everything. But thanks, thanks for enlightening me.
Chief Bossen, just further to that one, would it also be a situation where the chief would have the latitude to decide whether supporting the neighboring municipality would leave the city under-resourced and choose not to send resources?
Absolutely. And I spoke a little bit to that earlier as well, where, where because you get the call doesn't mean you have to provide the resources. And part of the reason could be that the resources are already deployed within, within the city, so.
Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Then I've also got a couple of questions that are more about ICF in general, more than the fire agreement. And one of those is just for whoever on administration is best equipped to answer it. I just don't quite understand what the subject to of this approval means in terms of, does the subject to of this approval mean that we signed it today, we start working on it today, and then it gets canceled if we don't come to any other, to a complete ICF framework? Or does it mean that this agreement won't get signed and go into force until we get a complete ICF framework?
I'll, I'll speak to that, Counselor Bressi. So I think the intention here is to recognize that the ICF is intended to be a, for lack of a better term, a package deal. And there are a number of different items that both the city and county would have different interests in. This is a, I think it's fair to say, a higher priority item for the county than it is for the city. We are comfortable that we're fully staffed and well-resourced with respect to protecting our own persons and citizens. And this offers an opportunity for approving over that. I think this is a higher priority for the county, and I think the intention here is to say that council is giving its endorsement to this recommendation, but that the agreement wouldn't actually be agreed to until we see the complete package of ICF proposals. And at that stage, we'd be able to take a bit of a tally to say, on balance, does this provide significant enough benefit to Grand Prairie residents for us to agree to all of these different things? At a really basic level, if the only thing we can agree to is something that provides additional benefit to residents outside of our city limits, then we would have to ask ourselves whether that was an agreement worth entering into. And so I think the intention here is to highlight that this is a logical progression that the city may be willing to enter into, subject to all the rest of the things that the ICF process will uncover. So I think that's the intention. And I would even suggest that in the, in the motion, the recommendation here says, subject to the approval of a final intermunicipal collaboration framework package with the county, I would, I would put in there satisfactory. I think that should, any ICF that we would sign should be satisfactory to city, to city council. I think that's really the sticking, sorry, not the sticking point. That's the point that we're, the intention here is to say, the city of Grand Prairie will agree to this if the overall package is satisfactory. Not saying that the city would necessarily win, quote unquote, on every item, but that we shouldn't be able to look at it and go back to our residents and say, this was a satisfactory thing that benefits everybody in the region. So I think that's the intention there.
Great. And then one other question, maybe for you or maybe for somebody else. I'm also just curious, a concern I do have in this agreement is that it appears to me, reading it, that it's easy for either party to withdraw. They essentially just get to say, we're withdrawing with proper notice, and they're out, which is actually okay with me for this agreement, because I think that it is a pretty common sense one. I think it does bring a lot of benefits to the county. I don't know if that, if I'm going to be able to support other agreements that come out of this process if they've got a similar clause. So I'm curious if there's been conversation about, is that gonna, is that just something that's unique to this particular agreement? Is that the kind of language we should expect to potentially see in most agreements coming our way? I just love a little bit of context on that.
I will do my best to keep a very short answer this time, rather than a very long one I gave, but as my council colleagues know, I'm not necessarily good at that. And I would say it depends. I would suggest that different service areas would have different arrangements. Some where one municipality chooses to discontinue a service and contract that service from, from the other municipality, wouldn't have that same sort of ability to withdraw. One where the two municipalities choose to have somebody else deliver the service on our behalf, we wouldn't have that same ability to withdraw. So I think it depends on each different type of service. Any other questions for administration? Nothing else. Chief Bossen, there was one thing that we had discussed at the committee about review. And so has the agreement been amended to include some, some opportunity for us to analyze who's using what?
Mayor Given, I, I know we did talk about sort of an annual view based on, on the financial impact on either side, so that is in, currently in the agreement as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue. And if there wasn't, then can I get, we'll move on to business rising. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor Given. I would- Great. Well, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council approve the fire automatic aid agreement, subject to the approval of a final intermunicipal collaboration framework package with the county that is satisfactory to city council.
Thanks very much, Counselor Pressy. Any discussion or debate on the motion?
I'll actually speak to that as well.
Counselor Pressy?
And just to speak to that, I'm really excited to see the work going to this. Like I said, this is common sense. I think it's got a real potential to increase safety for our residents. It's also maybe got a potential to save costs in the long run, too. Safety is my primary concern. That being said, I don't love that it doesn't make provision for cost sharing. I don't love that easy ability to cancel it, which I'm okay with this agreement, but future agreements that are coming this way, I'm not going to be able to support them in a variety of areas if they're similarly loose in there. But for this package, it makes a lot of sense.
Thanks, Counselor Pressy. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Chief Boston, thanks very much for being here this afternoon. Appreciate it. That'll take us to item 7.2. I will look to Mr. Glavine for an introduction on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So it's recommended that council approve a 10-year lease agreement with 1170292 Alberta Limited, who are the owners of the existing or former Park Hotel site downtown adjacent to 214 Place. And that would be with commercial lease terms to be negotiated by administration. So I apologize for my ad lib in there with some additional information in addition to the motion. So to give the highlights of what it is that we're proposing, I'm going to go over a few of the key terms of the proposed agreement. So this is for the construction of a mixed-use building of six or more stories that would comprise roughly 120,000 square feet of leasable space. This also includes the demolition of the existing Park Hotel by April of 2020. Construction of the new building would commence 12 months from the signing of the lease, which I anticipate we'd have the lease signed before the end of the year subsequent to approval of this motion. Construction would need to be completed within 24 months, and the city has an opportunity for a rent-free period to conduct its tenant improvements at time of occupancy, as well as some parking that comes with it. And the city will be utilizing some of the existing parking adjacent to the site that is currently designated as public parking for staff parking subsequent to taking possession of our space. And one of the things along with this agreement is that we are waiving the development inspection permit fees for the facility construction, which are approximately $250,000. And happy to take any questions.
Thanks very much, Mr. Glavine. Any questions for Director Glavine? I don't see anybody in the queue. That being the case, then I'd look for motions arising. Can I get a motion on that recommendation? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve a 10-year lease agreement with 1170292 Alberta Limited, owners of the Park Hotel with commercial lease terms to be negotiated by administration.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. There was one question that I had. Director Glavine, can you speak to what the, at this stage, is it possible to estimate the amount of property tax revenue that would come from a building of this scale?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Based on the construction of a six-story building in this case, with one story of commercial and five stories of residential, as the minimum, we'd be looking at approximately $250,000 annually.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just another question for administration. Can you just kind of give me an idea of what the context of how many residential doors would be in those five units?
Director Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Given. If you could just give me one minute, I will pull that up.
While we're looking for that, Counselor Tool, did you have discussion or debate or a question?
I have one question regarding parking. There's probably going to be some concerns of a building that size going up in Grand Prairie. Where would the parking be and how much is dedicated to it?
So Director Glavine, well, you're finding some additional details there. I guess one is about the number of residential units and the other question was with regard to provision of parking.
Thank you.
Director Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So we're looking at approximately 100 units, approximately 20 units per floor. And as far as parking, they are doing two stories of parking underground on site.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Director Glavine. Two for one there. Any other questions? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thank you, Director Glavine, for all your hard work and administration's hard work in putting something like this together and improving the state and the look and appeal of our downtown and adding more doors. Just a question in regards to the demolition of the park. So it would be demolished under this agreement once signed, no later than April of 2020. What kind of funds has the city already put forward towards that? And is there any chance demolition could start sooner?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So as part of the downtown incentives program, we have set aside $100,000 to assist with the demolition of this facility as per that program, which is separate from the agreement we're here to discuss today. The ownership's intention is to have this completed long before April, but they have guaranteed that they can have it down by April.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then we'll call to the vote on Counselor Thiessen's motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I think that handles all of our items under reports and would take us into community business, starting with item 8.1 and the Arts Development Committee and Counselor Friesen. I think that was yours.
It is. Thank you, Mayor Given. So arts, oh, I would like to request that council approve the minutes of the community service, oh, sorry, I've got the wrong one here. The minutes of the Arts Development Committee meeting held on Wednesday, November 20th.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything we need to correct before we adopt them into the official record forever and ever? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Friesen, anything you wanted to highlight from that?
I do, I do. We were able to support two artists, Arjun Roy and Aaron Marco. They have similar projects. One is an electronic EP and one is a music album, which it's neat for us to be able to do this because this, these are up-and-coming artists who want to be able to put their music out there. And we've done this for previous artists who have actually done very well. Tenille's name, of course, comes up frequently as someone who is in the music world, putting Grand Prairie on the map. So we wish all the best to Mr. Marco and Mr. Roy as we support them in those endeavors. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. And Counselor Friesen, I should, I'll just note, too, just this weekend, I was given a book to bring to city council that I didn't bring tonight, but that was a result of support from the Arts Development Committee, a children's book by a local author, Naden Parkin. And so I'll be bringing that to a future council meeting, but it has a great spread that says, thank you to the City of Grand Prairie and another result of our arts development funding. So good to see. Thanks for that update, Counselor Friesen. Item 8.2, the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee. Counselor Pressy?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 26, 2019, as presented.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Pressy. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Pressy, anything you want to highlight from that meeting?
Mayor Given, I would love to. First of all, I'll highlight that administration has issued a building permit for the Copshead High School, which is really exciting. Exciting to see that building go up, and it's also exciting that as part of a building permit, presumably, we get some fees from it, which is exciting since the provincial government has decided to stop paying half of its property taxes. I love when we could get some fee for the services we give them. Engineering Services has now posted road rehabilitation phase one for next year for tender. That's exciting, too. I'm excited to see the investment we're putting in our roads. But I think the most, the two significant items of business were around a development permit, which CMHA was approved to move their office spaces into a building that's just a little bit south of Giant Tiger, and I think it's going to be great for CMHA. I also think that's a building that could use some pick-me-up, so I think it'll be great for the community. And then the last thing I'll highlight is we had some great conversations about residential sidewalk rehabilitation. Councilor member that we had some residents come and be concerned about a sidewalk that was going to potentially be removed from their area, and out of that, we've had discussions about how does this process work? And committee was really satisfied that administration's done a great job of looking at the processes for planning and tendering and completing projects and making sure that there's some robust opportunities for the public to have a say and give pushback and talk not just to administration, but if necessary, also to council. It was really great to see administration taking this extra care and some extra thought into how to help better serve our residents.
Thanks very much, Counselor Pressy. That'll take us to item 8.3, the Community Services Committee, and Counselor Friesen again.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Community Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 26, 2019.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Friesen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Friesen, anything to highlight from that meeting?
You bet. So some excitement over at Bo's Event Center. So this is the small side of Revolution Place. The largest show ever produced on that side is coming in March, and that's the Gordon Bamford Concert. Also, we have, the county has recommended some adjustments to the county connector service. So this is the bus service that runs out into the county and back into the city. And there's going to be some adjustments, but one of the best adjustments is that there will be Saturday service to the city, so that is pretty exciting there. And we also received an update on the transition of the former DTS service into city transit from Steve Harvard, who's our transit manager. The services that are provided have been maintained. All of the individuals who were previously in the services are in the services, and we are very, very close to getting the new forms rolled out so that new members can also join the accessible transportation program as managed by the city. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. That'll take State Point 4 and the Corporate Services Committee meeting. And Counselor O'Toole, I think you stepped in for that one as deputy chair. Can you handle that set of minutes for us?
Yes, Mayor Given, thank you very much. I did have the opportunity to fill in for Counselor Menhawz, who had a medical procedure done and was unable to attend that meeting that day. So with that, I would like to make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 26, 2019, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
I've got a couple of things that I'm looking forward to get passed tonight, and then after that, I'll give you the Director Services area update. I've got a full glass of water and I'm ready to go. So on the recommendation of the 2020 Business Improvement Area Budget Review, I move council review and approve the 2020 Business Improvement Area, which is known as the BIA budget, in council chambers on Monday, March 9, 2020, at 3:00 PM as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, I know you've got a lot ahead of you.
And just to give you a heads up, this is sort of, we do this every year. It's a process that has to be done, and so we're here tonight and we'll be doing it again in March. So I also moved and direct administration to notify businesses within the BIA of the above date by letter accompanied by a copy of the proposed 2020 BIA budget.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. Carries, Counselor O'Toole?
And with that, Bylaw C-1299A is an amendment to the Procedure Bylaw. Bylaw C-1323C is amendment to the Subdivision Authority Bylaw, and Bylaw C-1388A is an amendment to the City Administration Bylaw. So with that, I move the council give first reading to Bylaw C-1299A being an amendment to the Procedure Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. No discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
I move that we give second reading to Bylaw C-1299A.
Okay, thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Now that we're at the point for discussion debate, are these bylaw changes as a result of the recent corporate reorganization and essentially housekeeping to make sure the right positions are reflected in the right spots?
Yeah, we went from three committees to four now, and we've got some different terminology that we use that we need to correct that in the bylaw. Otherwise, it's not a proper bylaw then. So this is just what we call housekeeping and making sure that we're current. We've got to make the city clerk happy and we've got to make the city manager happy.
Those are probably the two most important things we could possibly do.
Yeah, and then, of course, our wives, but they're not here and they don't really care at this point. But at this point in time, this is to make everything legit and we've got obligations with the provincial government.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading of Bylaw C-1299A? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
And I move that council have third reading of Bylaw C-1299A at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much for that emphasis on "at," triggers everybody to remember that in order for us to have all three readings of the bylaw here this afternoon, this motion must pass unanimously, otherwise the third and final reading would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Now that I've done that spiel once on this bylaw, I'm not going to do it again on the next one. You just listen for the "at" that Counselor O'Toole makes in this motion for the next couple. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading here this afternoon? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
I move that we give third reading to Bylaw C-1299A, that being an amendment to the Procedure Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? I see no one ringing in. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carried. Counselor O'Toole, have a sip of water and?
I did. We did round one. We're up to two now, so I move that council give first reading to Bylaw C-1323C, being an amendment to the Subdivision Authority Bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. No discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
And I move that we give second reading to Bylaw C-12, sorry, C-1323C.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading? I don't see anybody ringing in. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Counselor O'Toole?
I move that we have third reading of the Bylaw C-1323C at this meeting.
Excellent emphasis. Thank you very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading at this meeting? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion does pass unanimously. Counselor O'Toole?
And with that, I move that we have third reading of Bylaw C-1323C.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole? Final round.
Okay. We'll start again. I move the council give first reading to Bylaw C-1388A being an amendment to the City Administration Bylaw.
Okay, thanks, Counselor O'Toole. No discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
I move that we give second reading to Bylaw C-1388A.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Motion for second reading open for discussion and debate. Is there any? I see people shaking their heads in the negative. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
I move that we have third reading of Bylaw C-1388A at this meeting.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading? Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate or debate on the merits of having third and final reading here this afternoon? See nobody ringing in. Please vote. Thank you.
And I move that we give third reading of Bylaw 1388A being amendment to the City Administration Bylaw.
Okay, thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole, overtime.
Well, we're going in. We're at playoffs now, so given our hard. I just want to give you a brief update of the Director Services area and some things that have changed in the last month.
Well, and Counsel O'Toole, I think in terms of overtime, I think you actually have additional motions to make.
Man, okay. Well, I got the floor, so I'll take my time, but I will go forward. I move that council approve Danielle White Way as the Designated Officer of Chief Financial Officer for the City of Grand Prairie effective November 30, 2019.
Okay, thanks very much. So a motion for council to make that appointment. Any discussion or debate on that motion?
I want you to accept my apologies, Danielle. It was on the next page, so.
Wasn't trying to string you along, okay? I don't see anybody ringing in for discussion or debate, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries.
And I would like to move the council appoint Arlene Karbushusky as the Designated Officer of City Clerk for the City of Grand Prairie effective September 23, 2019.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Now, Counselor O'Toole, I am curious what happened at that meeting.
Well, Shane got bumped. Two ladies got ahead of him here, so with the with the motions. But assessment and taxation, just a heads up, no properties will be proceeding to tax sale as all property owners have made arrangements. Finance, this department has split into two areas with one side focusing on budgeting and the other side will be focusing on reporting. Human Resources, the External Health and Safety Audit is now complete. The city passed with an audit score of 84% and there will be an action plan coming ahead. Procurement, the sale of surplus items from the leisure center is going well. Implementation and e-procurement software will start early in December. And another big one here, this change is GIS and ITS. These two departments have merged as they're neighbors on this third floor. They are working doing things together here. And also Corporate Efficiency and Strategy Initiatives. Administration is hosting an engagement session with industry and service providers on, wow, this is on November 22nd, 26, sorry, to update them on the Canola, the Key Project and illicit feedback. So with that, that would be my report, sir. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. And thanks for stepping in on the committee, which was obviously pretty complex. We'll move on to item eight point five, the Protective and Social Services Committee. Counselor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just make a motion that we council adopt the minutes of the Protectors and Social Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, November 26, 2019.
Thanks, Counsel Plott. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Plott, anything you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Given. We had a pretty light agenda, but we had some some interesting things coming from our directors, rural service up to date. So Community Social Development had a ribbon cutting for the Community Kitchen Project that was held at the Friendship Center on November 21st. So congratulations to the organizations. I didn't get to attend, but I heard it was well received, so that's good. The Friendship Center and Salvation Army from doing this have increased efficiencies by having one location for services. Enforcement Services let us know that the Toys for Tots project is running from currently to December 13. This project was very successful last few years in collection of similar priced toys in lieu of city bylaw tickets being given out during that period. So it seems like a pretty good win if you got a ticket. The Candy Cane Check Stop is planned for December 12 at 1:00 PM in partnership with Alberta Health Services. RCMP, the officers in charge has rolled out a new roles and responsibilities expectation document. A K Division Mobile Breath Testing Unit is coming for up to two, four day weekends in December to assist in enforcement of impaired driving in our area. The Grand Prairie RCMP has partnered with a coalition for safer roads for ticketing campaign for the season. Designated drivers will be greeting, will be getting a free coffee. So another good deal for the community.
Thanks very much, Counsel Plott. And that handles all of our committee business. I don't believe we had any items of correspondence and would take us to delegation business. We have the two delegations, the County of Grand Prairie and the Grand Prairie Pipe and Drum Band. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the delegations, I guess, presentations for information.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counsel Pressy?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a just a question. If anybody recalls, honestly, I was I found that presentation kind of confusing, a little bit off putting, so I might have missed it. But am I am I understanding right that we still have not been paid for it? They didn't make a payment today?
Mr. Bork?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The we have a number of these agreements. And the last I checked, which was earlier this morning, the county had not yet paid this bill that was due. The Reeve did say that it would be forthcoming before the end of the year. Sex Smith, which is another community we have a similar agreement with, paid in August. So we are expecting the county to pay soon.
I was under the impression they're coming today to pay, and I'm understanding right that that to our knowledge, that hasn't happened yet today, correct? Mr. Bork?
They hadn't prior to the council meeting. I haven't checked with the clerk where most people pay their bills at this time.
I'm not sure if that check would fit in the overnight drop box or not, Counsel Pressy. Any other questions or discussion? Counsel Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just I guess a question. Since we're talking the check that's 60 days overdue, at what point does the city start charging interest on services? I guess for unpaid bills. Or do we? Do we make it a practice?
We do for typical monies owing to the city. It's 18% per annum that we charge. Administration are not recommending at this time to charge the county interest. We believe that this oversight will be corrected soon and hope that they pay their bill.
Good to hear. Thank you very much, Mr. Bork.
Any other discussion arising? Not seeing any, then I'll call for the vote on Counsel Thieson's motion to receive the two delegations for information. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And I don't believe we unless there was anything else, we don't have any notice of motion, and so we will recess. We do have scheduled delegations and a public hearing for later on this evening. We'll see council back here for 6:00 PM start.